Bruce, can you hear me now?
It's coming through. Speakers. Every now and then I hear just a clip of sound.
Okay, well, I heard you perfectly. We did have an issue when I switched programs. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Doug can hear you too.
Hi Doug.
Hi. Thank you.
We're good. No changes. Okay, just in case. Why is this? Oh, there.
Okay, we have a second to go.
Yes. I think we are.
Okay, very good. Good evening, and at 7:03 PM, I'll call this meeting into order of the May 6th Town of Ithaca Planning Board. The first item on our agenda is a project secret determination for Boswick Road Cemetery. Is there somebody from the town that would be available or project manager that will be able to give us a briefing on it? Thank you.
For a couple of years now. I think they've actually been. Basically. Right now. I would be looking at records. Senator. And working with them. They've. They've had a lot of. A lot of issues that there. Well, my understanding is on the original. The D. There was a. Cemetery was. On batteries and faults and. On the vision, the D Bakers got the lands wasn't transferred over to the. They. They had. So that's that's. It'd be a viable. There's so many. By. Now, so. That has been just that. This is. That TV. That I. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to open it up to the board or anybody who questions. I was I was out there this afternoon and I was just kind of curious. It looks like it's fallen into, you know, over the decades and probably a half century or more. It's fallen into disrepair. Does the is the town only responsible for mowing and no, no other maintenance, none of the liabilities? That was my next question. What about the families of those that are in the burial plots? Any communication or are they just sort of. All abandoned with with nobody, with none of the burial plot families really taking an active role?
I haven't heard. I know.
I think.
Story is named. I should know what I've talked to him a couple of times. David George. He went through. And made a long, long list of who's been buried there. It was originally thought to be a family cemetery. It was part of the problem. Towns can't take over. Family cemeteries. Private. Cemeteries that we can take over. But it was proven in by David that it was in fact not a family cemetery. There's multiple families that were buried there. Yeah, that's that's part of the history. That's as much as I know.
Great. Any other any other questions?
My understanding is the Parks Department is already doing all doing the maintenance. Is that right?
Yes.
So from the town's point of view, there's no change in the workload. There's no extra responsibility. The the Parks Department will continue. I must say that having just taken a cursory look, it's been very nicely maintained over the years. It's nice to look.
I thought it was interesting while I was in there. One of the headstones is actually. A tree has grown around it. It's kind of cool. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. If you could just stay seated there in case we have any questions, we go through the seeker. If everybody could. Turn to the seeker form that has been completed on behalf of this project. I'm not going to belabor every question on it, but it. I will go through, you know, part one, you know, the just brief description of proposed action is a subdivision of the Boswick Cemetery from a. From a 115 acre farm parcel located on Boswick Road. The Town of Ithaca will only maintain the cemetery after subdivision. The rest of the property owned by the Baker family will remain in agriculture. There is no proposed development. Any any changes on part one that you see?
No.
And I'm asking the board of this. But you're welcome to reply, Austin. Okay, going moving on to part two. The the impact assessment, and again, something that staff completes. Everything is marked as no or small impact may occur. Any other any other comments, changes, corrections? Okay, and part three, the determination of significance. Any 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 changes? I didn't notice any anything that needs to be corrected. No typos, no. No grammaticals. That's great. Okay, any 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 comments on part three? Okay, and in that case, I would like to ask for a motion to make a negative determination of environmental significance in accordance with Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and the and six NYCRR, Part 617 of New York State Environmental Quality Review Act for the Boswick Cemetery action as proposed based upon information in the EAF Part 1 and for reasons set forth in the EAF Part 2. I have a motion. Bill? Second? Okay, all in favor? All right. Pose. And I need you for the record to say that. Okay, and it was unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, now, at this point, we will. Thank you. We'll open it up to a public hearing for this proposal. The proposal is consideration of preliminary and final subdivision approval for the proposed two lot subdivision on Boswick Road east of Sheffield Road and Boswick Road intersection. The project involves subdividing a .53 plus or minus acre lot that contains a cemetery from 115 acre farm parcel. The cemetery will be transferred to the Town of Ithaca subdivision. There is no development proposed. This is an undecided action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and subject to environmental review, which we have just passed. Okay, at 7:13 PM, I'm opening the the sub two public hearing. Seeing no one in the audience here. Is there anyone in internet world that? Okay, yes, Bruce.
Got it. Does that work now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, good. Thank you. I I'm Bruce Britton. I have the pleasure of serving as the historian for the Forest Home Neighborhood. I would like to speak in favor of this. There are many small, some very small privately owned cemeteries in the county, and they are falling into disrepair. I I think I I support what the Town of Ithaca is doing, and I am hoping that our neighboring municipalities can do likewise to protect these little pieces of history that are just disappearing if we don't do something. So I support it and thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Britton. Any other any other comments from the public? Okay, at 7:14, I am closing this public meeting.
Hearing.
Hearing. Okay, and I will need a motion. To. Just a moment. A motion to accept the to a motion. For the preliminary and final subdivision approval for Boswick Road Cemetery.
So moved.
Road tax parcel 32 point. Dash one dash 18 point five. Would somebody like to make that motion? So. I believe that there may be one item that needs to be changed on the on the resolution. Ariel, did you make the motion?
I made the motion. I'll make the motion.
Can we have can we have a second? Okay. Okay, now we'll open it up to discussion. I believe there is one change that needs to be made on the resolution. Chris?
Yes, so wow, that's loud. So resolved clause number two. We need to add another condition of approval because the project needs variances from the zoning board. So at the end of the paragraph that that starts with that the planning board hereby grants. Where it says, subject to the following condition, we just changed that to plural conditions. And then semicolon, and then in A, a comma, and and, and then in B. A new B, rather, receipt of any necessary variances from the zoning board of the field. Standard language, we just left it all.
Okay, Ariel, is that acceptable?
Conditions, conditions are acceptable.
And Liz, is that acceptable? Okay, I will now ask for a vote on on the resolution based upon the changes that were made. Okay, all in favor? I. Pose. Passes unanimously. Okay, and moving right along. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a recommendation to the town board regarding proposed amendments, Town Code, Chapter 270, Article XXB, Section 270 dash 219. Telecommunications facilities. And again, this is a recommendation that's coming from the planning board. There will be no public hearing or resolution of approval. Coming from the planning board is simply a resolution of recommendation. Yes, would somebody like, we've all had the. Had the proposed. Town code change. Does anybody have any questions or would anybody like to review it in detail? Okay, Liz, since you since you volunteer, it can take pages one through 35.
We can't hear you, Liz.
I can't hear you. Is your little red light on or green light?
Sorry, you missed all my jokes. I wanted to just clarify that that the types of things that have come to the planning board before that, in my view. I don't have anything to say about, but they have to come to us. They still have to come to us, like like the co-location of a new thing on an existing tower and whatnot. We still.
There there's certain co-locations that won't come to the planning board.
Yeah, okay. Oh, really? Okay, can you clarify what?
Yep.
That is. I found the ones that came to us sort of confusing. Why they were like.
The first is one that's actually. A set of changes that. The US Congress and the Federal Communications Commission have said must be approved. And so there's really no reason to bring them to the planning board because you can't require changes as long as it meets their definition of, they call it an eligible facility. And it's all that's actually. They're all defined in the laws to what that is. So that's one that won't come to the planning board anymore because if it did, you you have no discretion to have to approve it.
Yeah.
As long as it is an eligible facility. Another one is. Certain co-locations. Where it's an existing small wireless facility. So let's say it's on a telephone pole and they typically are less than 50 feet. And they're going to co-locate on that, and they're not making a change to the existing structure so that it's no longer considered a small wireless facility. So it's still less than 50 feet or there's other ways that's defined, but that's that's the basic gist of it.
So previously, that would have come back.
That at all. Well. So it might have. The town had what it called streamlined provisions for approval. And Chris, remember the streamlined provisions, those didn't come to the planning board, right? If if it fell under the streamline. And and so the town had come up with its own criteria for when it would would and wouldn't, like if you weren't adding more than X antennas or that, you know, they were they met a certain antennas met a certain size requirement, things like that. So it's possible that there are now some co-locations that might not have fallen under streamlined provisions that would have come to the planning board that. But so it's if it's a small wireless facility or if it's co-located on something that's not a small wireless facility, so it'll be more than 50 feet or more than certain types of equipment. Those still don't come to you unless the co-location does certain things, and that's all spelled out in D3. Increasing the height of the structure by more than 15%, increasing the number of antennas by more than 50%, adding one or more microwave antenna additions, things like that. So things that have more of an aesthetic impact.
Perfect.
Will come. But otherwise, they won't. So if it's on a tower that's 150 feet tall and they're adding two antennas.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's kind of minor, not really going to have a very big aesthetic impact.
I love because I feel like we were evaluating, we didn't have anything to really evaluate in some of the ones that came to us.
And now the one of the biggest changes is there now a design standard. Which we didn't have before. And there are pages of them, and they they vary a bit depending on what it is, whether it's a small wireless facility or not. In a node, you know, so it's a whole series of them or not. They're they're, I mean, a lot of them are similar standards, but some have. There's some variation.
Okay.
So so now you will have those designs.
That's great. I would feel less lost when something comes to the planning board. I had a couple of other questions, maybe just. Oh, there was a section about batch applications. And I unders, it was like the the time periods that the planning board needed to respond. And it seemed like it didn't include a scenario where there were multiple deployments that included. In my notes, I say something from subsection B2, so. Like. Non-small wireless facility. It sort of covers. It covers a something that mixes A2 and B1. But what about B2, like that has the much like a larger facility and has a much longer period of time? What if there's a mix of things that includes that? Very if I'm not explaining this very well.
Let's see. So which which category do you think is not covered? I'm sorry.
B2.
B2 for individual, non-congregated facilities.
So if you have a if you have batched applications that include something in B2.
Yep.
Is that? What's the timeline?
Yeah, so this follows exactly the. Federal regulations.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's the language straight out of the federal.
Yeah, this is really right out of there. So if it's batched. Well, then it wouldn't. Would probably be, I'd have to look.
Yeah.
It might be 150 days.
I will not lose sleep over this, but it just is something I noticed.
No, I know. This is just right out of the regular.
Okay. I think those are all of my questions.
You actually read it very attentively.
After I woke up, after the first session of trying, I did read it because I have full disclosure, a tower in my backyard. So, yeah, I, this is an area that I try to pay attention to, understand.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I did want to commend the the committee for. To do some work on this. Because in particular, I agree with Lucy at the amount of effort that was given to aesthetics. It's going to go a long ways to acceptance of the of wireless. So it's not just being put up on any any poll or anything without so without due consideration. Do anybody, any members of that committee, thank you.
Caitlin Cameron, board member. I was curious. There are a lot of definitions here. Are most of these new definitions or existing definitions, are most of them standard definitions coming from other sources? Or are are they some that we're creating? Curious about the source.
So these stuff, so our zoning chapter, which is chapter 270 in the town code, has a separate definition section, section 270 dash 5. But the Codes and Ordinances Committee decided not to put these definitions there for two reasons. One, so that people can find them as they're reading this law. They don't have to go to that whole other section. But also because there are a few words here that have a special meaning for this section and not more generically, like I think the word height is in here, and it's also in 270 dash 5, it means it's measured something different because this is very specific to the telecommunications. A lot of these definitions, most of these definitions were not, or maybe none of them were in are in the current law, which was drafted in like the late 1990s, I believe, not too long after the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 was passed. So these are pretty much all new. I mean, some of them are very obvious, like Director of Code Enforcement, Director of Planning, what those mean, but as far as and even the agency ones, I mean, you know, that's easy enough to figure out, but a lot of these are new. And that I would say at least the majority, if not, you know, the large majority come pretty much straight from federal, the federal regulations. I decided not to stray from that because we want things to be consistent. Yeah, so that that's.
A question about the definitions as well. I may have actually read them. So I got confused when I was reading because a there's a personal wireless service facility, and then a subcategory of that is small wireless. So then it would later say like non-small wireless, etc. I can't remember what's the term. And then I was like, is that what is that? You sort of have to deduce what that is. It's just anything that doesn't meet the small wireless facility.
That was the intent, but maybe we should look at that and see if we should have an extra definition or somehow clarify that because if you've got that question, others might too. And so that, let me.
It's hard to imagine the universe of personal wireless service facilities remaining. And so the small ones are defined, and then I have to.
It's just, it's a personal wireless service facility that's not, doesn't meet the definition.
Yeah.
And maybe we need to have a definition for non or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we'll look at that. Yeah, I mean, that's easy enough. A person, I mean, the definition would be a personal wireless service facility that is not a small wireless facility here, does not meet the definition. Something like that.
Yeah, I think it would be nice if it was covered because I went back to the definition.
And it wasn't there.
Was there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I think that's all of my comments.
I just want you to know, and we've continued to review this even since it was sent to you. The draft says final, but it's really, it's a final draft that you have. It's it's continuing, you know. And I just wanted to let you know there are a few other changes that were made to the draft that was then made available to the public for the public hearing. I don't think it's going to be anything. Well, I shouldn't presume. Let me just kind of hit. Like now I've defined permittee, and there's one place where it talks a lot about a permit holder, and now we're just using that term. So we're just sort of cleaning some things up. I think. In the. Section C, which is general approval and permit requirements for personal wireless service facilities. What was section five is now titled exceptions, and so one is that the facility is on property owned or controlled by the town. You know, that that stays in there as being pulled out, and the town board has absolute discretion to decide what to do. And that's outside of right of ways. And then we've added one. Here's another exception to the law. The law won't apply to any facilities exclusively for private, non-commercial radio and television reception and private citizens bands, licensed amateur radio and other similar non-commercial communication. This, the previous law had many of these same exclusions and many other laws due to this law is really aimed at the commercial. Facilities. And then we've added non-conforming facilities section saying that if you have a lawful facility that, you know, legally existed on the date that this law was adopted. You can continue it. So everybody who's already got a facility doesn't have to, they're not all of a sudden out of compliance, they have to come in, and what do we do, you know, right? They can continue even though it doesn't conform to this new law, but if they have any proposed modification, then they've got to. then they've got to, um, come back in and follow this law. You have an application for that modification. Go through the law. So that's, that's in there now. Um, the, the town code, the zoning chapter does have an article on non-conforming structures and uses. But when I look at it, it just didn't fit very well with these things. So we thought, let's just write it right into the law, what we want to do, and consulted with staff and that was where their recommendation, we do it this way. Um. Uh, it, there aren't a huge number of things. I mean, the little things, just sort of cleaning it up, which I won't mention because I don't think you'll care, but, um, trying to hit the major. Give me a second, there are a lot of pages to go through. It's redlined, so I can find them, you know, very quickly. I just have to flip. And, um. Section is this? So in section S, which deals with the permit renewals, um. Subsec, S subsection four talks about, um, the Director of Code Enforcement, you know, renewing a permit for a two-year term. Provided that, and it has the requirements, the sort of objective criteria that are there that they look at, whether they submitted all the required application materials and fees, they're in compliance with all these things, et cetera. And then, um, just as with the, um, planning board, uh, determinations for issuing site plan and special permit, we needed to add a provision, um, that if they're in compliance, uh, and they, they assert that a denial of the renewal would constitute an effective prohibition. And if that denial is based on, um, their failure to comply with any of the non-federal standards that were set out, then the Director of Code Enforcement has to consider whether the facilities are the least intrusive means of addressing a significant gap in the applicant's, um, personal wireless services. It's the same analysis the planning board does, and that all comes out of, um, the telecommunications act, the, and, um, the Second Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the federal appeals appellate level court, um, above the district court level, but before you get to the US Supreme Court, the Second Circuit, um, court, um, has a, a case that talks about what does it mean, uh, at, well, first of all, the, the Federal Telecommunications Act defines effective prohibition in a certain way, and then the Second Circuit interpreted that and said, this is what it means. And basically you have to do this. Uh, and you're compelled, if it is, in fact, if it's an official prohibition, you have to grant, um, approval. Because the act says you do. So I just wrote that in. I just, it was just a piece that was missing for, not when you, you, the planning board involved, but when the, um, Director of Code Enforcement is making decisions on renewals. And that's it.
Okay, and the changes that you went over Susan Mills will, if you're in the final draft, can you post?
Ye- yes, in fact, it's probably already out, is my guess, Paul, at?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably already posted on the website, yeah.
That being said, with Liz's, uh, concern, uh, will that make it as part of the final draft or will?
No, but.
How would, how would that be handled?
So.
It becomes as a recommendation from the planning board and then I would have to assume that everybody is, uh, everybody in a burden of, uh,
It's a clarification. I don't think that would be a substantive change that would require a new public hearing or anything like that. Um, of any substantive changes, uh, made would need to be re-noticed for another public hearing, but that's just, you know, that's just a clarification. It's, it's not.
I've got one question.
Man, something, yes.
Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Then I'll. Question for the, um, planning staff there, that the wording about the shot clock controlling and things like that. Put a, a, a very firm timetable on the, on, on the planning process. Um, has this proved a problem in the past to be, for see any problems meet, meeting these times or are these reasonable times which we can expect to manage?
We haven't, we haven't had too much trouble in the past. What we've done is we have had to prioritize these applications over other applications because we legally have to get back to applicants within ten days of an application to let them know whether it's complete or not. And so, so we've been, we've been good with that so far. Um, if we get a barrage of applications in, um, all at once, I'm not sure how we'll handle that, but we'll, we'll make it work.
And those shot clocks are required by FCC order. So we didn't make those up or, you know, have discretion as to what they are. Uh, they just weren't written into our law before. We've been, the planning staff's been very aware of them and have been, you know, making sure they follow them. One thing that is hard for municipalities is those shot clocks apply to all approvals, not just planning board approvals. That's going to mean building permit issuance as well. I mean, it's everything has to be done within those. So that's one reason that this law is so specific about what the application requirements are, because those shot clocks, if, if they make a submission and we, uh, timely, or our staff timely reviews them and gets back within the requisite timeframe, it says this is what's missing, the shot clock is told, it stops running until they submit the missing material. Um, so that's why this law sells out in such detail what's required. It, it gone or are, are there going to be the days where there's a submission and the planning board looks at it and talks to the applicant and says, gee, it would be really nice if we could get this or see, like, this is going to, so that's why it's so thorough in what we want to see. Because you can't ask for more material. I mean, you can ask, but they can, they can, they know, and it doesn't stop the clock from running. So now we're just like, okay, this is what we need. This is the visual analysis and this is what we need, and we need a noise analysis. We need an analysis, you know, certifying you're going to meet the RF, uh, the radio frequency emissions exposure require, uh, uh, standards and, you know, just very, very.
It, it's been a little bit uncomfortable from a staff perspective in the past, because traditionally what we would do is we would ask the board what they would want to see in terms of additional materials for an application. But if the shot clock starts and we need to give them, give the applicant notice that they haven't given us everything, there's not always time to even canvas the board. So this, this actually selling it out a lot better is, is really beneficial from a staff perspective too.
Thank you.
So in terms of the resolution, um, when the board has made recommendations to the town board before, I have noticed that sometimes the board conditions their resolution, and if, if the board wants to, you, I think we can add a condition that says, uh, the addition of a definition for non-small wireless facility, if, if you want the town board to consider adding that definition to their final law.
If, if, Susan, if you're comfortable, it's just a clarification.
Well, and we can use that word hereby recommends that they adopt it, um.
Yeah, I would.
I, I wouldn't want us to slow the process down, but you know.
Or, well, it's up to you. If you want to just pass it as is and then we'll just make sure we do that, that's fine. Or if you want it written into your, uh, resolution, we can do it that way too.
Liz, what would you, uh, be comfortable with?
I would either, I, I think that. If you want.
Okay. That's fair. Okay, no, I, I think that's a, a good comment.
Okay, so, uh, with, with that being said, any, any final comments or questions? Hey, I will need a motion to recommend to the town board that, uh, the town adopted, proposed amendments to town code two seven zero dash two one nine telecommunications, personal wireless service facility. Who would like?
So.
I was hoping you would, Liz, okay, and the second. And Bill, so, all in favor? I pose motion for.
Do I get to vote on this twice?
Yes, you do.
Ah, cool.
He's on the Codes and Ordnances Committee, so he's, yeah, lived through this for a while.
Lot, lot of work there, Ariel, thank you.
It was all Bill.
Susan brought to the considerable amount of work on this, so.
Her too.
That's why I've been grumpy for the last three years. I'm going to be a much happier person soon.
Okay, moving right along. Next item on the agenda, persons to be heard. Uh, we'll hear from anybody, uh, either in the audience or in internet land in regards to anything that was not on the agenda this evening. And I see, uh, Mr., Mr. Britton, uh, you have your hand up? Okay, you got, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, Bruce Britton, I wanted to speak relative to the realignment of the Pleasant Grove Credit Farm intersection. You do have this odd rule that we can't talk about things during persons to be heard if they're on your agenda. And sooner or later, this will be on the agenda and we may not get a chance to address you then. And so here we are now. Um, at the last meeting, Susan Brock gave a brief impromptu speech about the mutual respect among Doug and me and Susan, and it's, it's true. We do value her personally and professionally. She's a great, uh, and effective attorney and she's certainly very persuasive. And just, here's an example. Let's say we have two documents. One is a legally binding contract signed by the top brass of Cornell and the town and the county, each swearing a solemn oath to carry this out. And then on the other hand, we have an email from a county employee who says, I don't know if I want to do this. Uh, it's, it would, it would be very difficult to, I would think, to make the argument that the email outweighs the legally binding document. Susan did a great job of, of trying to do that. Uh, uh. I don't want to sound critical, but it's, it's not the town's problem to resolve if Jeff Smith doesn't want to do his job. I mean, his job is not to design an intersection, not to build it, it's just to offer suggestions and approve it. And again, I don't want to be critical, but I want to see Susan back on your side of the table. Uh, not our, I want to see her arguing the town's position rather than the county's or, or Cornell's. So, for example, one condition of approval was that, uh, Cornell had to submit final construction drawings. They didn't. Instead, they submitted, what did they call them?
Record.
Record, like, record plans. I want to, I want to ask Cornell or I want to hear Susan ask Cornell, who are you trying to fool? This isn't, this does not meet the conditions that were set. Where are the construction drawings? I, I would like to hear her ask the county, why bother taking more traffic counts? The purpose of the intersection realignment, and this is a quote from the October eighteen, twenty eighteen letter from the Town Planning Board to the City Planning Board, "The purpose is to alleviate current and future cut-through traffic that moves through the Forest Home neighborhood." So if traffic hasn't gone up, it doesn't matter. We're trying to reduce current, uh, traffic loads. So okay, look, you had a deal with Cornell. They proposed the intersection realignment as a traffic mitigation measure in exchange for getting their dorms. They got their dorms. Now it's time for them to follow through and design a workable intersection realignment and build the darn thing. I just don't want to see you get pushed around. That's what I have to say. In a minute, Susan will demolish everything I just said, but then I'll come in. But if, if it can just sink in for a minute, but, thank you. And Doug, Doug also wants us to address the board. Thank you.
Okay, Doug, you have the floor now.
Hi, thank you. Hello, everyone. Um, yeah, twenty nineteen, North Campus Residential Expansion, clear-cut trade. Uh, Cornell gets the dorms, town gets the intersection. Everybody understood it, everybody agreed. No problem. Susan, I think you did a good job writing conditions to make sure that it was going to happen and there were no excuses. Uh, the MOU is even better. It's great. It just makes it clear, it, you cannot back out. Everyone has to do this, period. It is fantastic. Uh, Cornell started with their intersection designs. They had a traffic circle, they had potential, and then they sort of dropped that and moved on to something else. And then they slowed down and then they got behind schedule. And then they got their certificates of occupancy and then they stopped. No more ideas, no more proposals. That was it. They had what they wanted. And they were done. All they needed was an excuse not to deliver the intersection and oh, boy, oh, boy, Jeff Smith to the rescue. County Highway Manager, he writes a letter, not a letter, an email that says he'd rather leave it the way it is. That's all. They didn't say we can't do it. He said, I'd rather leave it the way it is. I think it's fine. Um, wasn't that his opinion in twenty nineteen? Wasn't that his opinion in twenty ten? He's not the one who suggested it. He just has to do it because his boss signed a letter and now he has to do it. You know, have, have any of you ever worked as engineers? Cause, cause I have.
Oh, Dan does.
Um, engineers, it's quite common for engineers to complain about what their bosses tell them they have to do. It's quite common for an engineer to say, I don't want to do it. Can't we just leave it the way it is? It doesn't change anything. I've discovered that. Um, so the fact that Jeff's view of that intersection has not changed, does not change everything the way Cornell would have you believe. It changes nothing. It's the same MOU. It's the same agreement. Uh, the F and I committee, the facilities and infrastructure, Jeff's committee at the county, they haven't said, oh, oh, we can't do it. The county attorney isn't calling up Susan and saying, please, let, get, get me out of this. It's Cornell that wants out. And they're just using the county as an excuse. Because, well, like all planning board applicants, Cornell wanted something for nothing and you wouldn't let them have that in twenty nineteen. He said, no, 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 we need an intersection. And so they're trying to get something for nothing retroactively. Uh, therefore Cornell's attorney wrote Susan an email, says, hey, what's the best way to get us out of this? A letter, uh, MOU? And Susan said, a letter's not going to do it. And how about an MOU? And from then on, the focus has been how, what's the best way to get Cornell out of its legal obligation to the town? Which, hello, isn't that backwards? I mean, shouldn't we be trying to enforce it? Shouldn't we make sure that they come through on their commitment? So I, that, that is a, I think, a big problem. Now Cornell, their case realistically is pretty darn weak. It depends on misrepresenting Jeff's email. It depends on misrepresenting his authority as outlined in the MOU. It depends on redefining final construction drawings as construction, as drawings that are not final and will not be constructed. And it depends on replacing an MOU that was specifically designed so that you could not, in fact, back out of it. So I guess overall, planning board's direction was clear in twenty nineteen. I think it's clear now. Everyone agrees. I am hoping that you will make it clear to the town board. You don't want to be overruled. And I hope you will make it clear to your dear attorney, of whom I am very fond, that you would prefer she work to further the planning board's interest and not Cornell's. And I thank you and I wish you all a good evening, whatever's left.
Well, again, both Doug and Bruce, thank you. Your comments are always welcome. You know that. Uh, you know, what, you know, we do have the ability to, you know, limit your comments to three minutes. We choose not to do so because uh, you are contributing members to the community and, and we, uh, you know, we, we do appreciate hearing you. Uh, I do not have anything new to add to your comments at this point. Uh, I don't believe that staff does either at this point, but again, you know, you are always welcome to, uh, to attend. again, you know, you are always welcome to, uh, to attend our meetings via Zoom or in person. We can, we can always see your smiling faces sitting here for a few hours. Uh, but, you know, again, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your evening also.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other, I don't see any other hands raised on the, on the Zoom screen. Uh, so, well, we will move on to the next item. I did not see any minutes come through, so we do not have any minutes for approval. Okay, next item, other business, and Bill notified me that he has some, he had a question that he wanted to bring to the, bring to the board.
Yes, I'm not quite certain how to phrase this. After the public hearing and vote on the Ithaca College playing field last week, I had an uncomfortable feeling that the public hearing process had not achieved the visibility and the exchange of information that is designed to do. I may be the only person, but I had a couple of thoughts, and I would raise them. The, the second, one of the things which everybody observed is that there were a couple of interested groups who submitted input too late. And all that they could be told was, sorry, it's too late, the vote has been taken, and you cannot. This was written contributions that came in the following day or days, yes. I think the underlying problem there is the way that the town tells the population about the people about items is very formal. I believe you post something, and I believe you put something in the Journal of Record, which is the Ithaca Journal, which nobody reads. And what that means is that the sort of people, which is most people, for whom there's one item every five years that is important to them, don't reliably hear about these things. So I have a general question, and maybe this is to you, Paul Leib, or to Susan. Are there low overhead ways getting information out to more people? I mean, I noticed, for example, Brian Crandall of the Ithaca Voice was listening in, doing that thing. He often puts up notices about things that are going to happen at the planning board in the city. Maybe we could feed into that? Just to get, to get, make sure that everybody who is a genuinely interested party knows about it. I don't think we do, that the current system works. So that's my first point. Susan, Elizabeth got a question.
I've thought a lot about this because I fully agree with you that, like, I think we could, we, meaning, I don't want to put more work on people, but I would love to find ways to improve our ability to communicate what's going on to people. Because I really want the public hearing to be, to feel valid from the public's perspective, and I don't think that we succeeded at that with this particular matter with the ball field, and some of that is unavoidable. But the other thing that I observed is that the way that our agenda is structured, we voted on the secret, and then we have the public hearing. Which, if I were a member of the public and I had an environmental concern, even, and I didn't know maybe a little bit more about the background of Seeker, I would find that very frustrating. I would think that this is all just for show, and that no one was really listening to me. So I don't know if there is a way to adjust that part of the process.
And I think I'll let Chris respond to that.
So, in terms of the notification, what we do internally is we will notify via mail, anyone within five hundred feet of the project, and sometimes even farther away. So anyone who's anywhere near the project will get a notification. And then Abby, who's our administrative assistant, will, she has an entire media contact list. It's not just the Ithaca Journal that she communicates with. She lets an entire media list know about the agenda, and, and then there are links to the materials, and then the materials are posted on the website. So there's that, and then there's the legal notification in the newspaper. And I often, as a staff member, will get phone calls from the media. Brian Crandall will call me, usually the day of the meeting, and, and ask questions. So, so the word really does go out, and we have wondered how we can be a little bit more effective without having to notify every single person in the town. There's twenty-three thousand people, and who knows who's really going to be interested in it. So we do actually put the word out as best as we can legally. Open to suggestions. When there's, when there's an incredibly controversial project, we have even gone out to neighborhood groups and, and notified neighborhood groups. So the town definitely puts out notifications.
You may notice I use the words low overhead. The last thing I want to do is to ask you to do lots more preparation. I know how busy you are preparing for these meetings.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a, it's a fine line between doing too much and doing not enough. So there's that.
I don't want to dwell on it. I just, it just struck me. Let me just raise my second point, and this is something I think we can do. The agenda always usually goes like this. Today's agenda like this. There's a public hearing, and then the next item is to consider a recommendation. And I think one of the reasons I was uncomfortable last time was we moved very quickly from the public hearing to a vote, and I think I'd have been more comfortable if we'd had just a little bit of discussion so that the public could know that we'd heard them and know the, the, know the evidence that we were looking at. Ariel, I think it was Ariel, one person voted against the motion, and I'd have liked to have heard what evidence that person was looking at. So I think maybe as a group, just to pause after the public hearing and have a brief discussion so the public knows they've been heard, could have made me more comfortable after that particular, uh, agenda item. And this is not meant as criticism of anybody, but...
No, no, and I believe that we, do we have the ability to alter the the sequence of events on an agenda? But, you know, I think more important to me as, as a, as a planning board member is, is that we are charged with reviewing a project, looking at it from our perspective. Not necessarily be influenced by the biggest group, the loudest group, but looking at it from the perspective of you as an individual, planning board member, doesn't meet the criteria that we are supposed to be reviewing. And, you know, to put, this is just my opinion, to put a public hearing, especially on a controversial project, ahead of the seeker, it would have a tendency to display perhaps, you know, unwarranted influence or unwanted desire to attempt to influence a planning board with their decision process. So that, that's, that's my opinion. Chris, you had something?
I have more things, but also Susan Brock can correct me if I'm wrong when it comes to the sequencing of the voting. Um, my understanding is that there is no legal requirement for for the board to hear public comments about the environmental review. And that the environmental review is supposed to happen before the public hearing.
At least for subdivisions, the New York County law says very specifically, the subdivision application is not complete until seeker is done. So you have to do seeker first, and then and then go on and consider approval of the project. Uh, well, and then hold the public hearing, because you can't hold a public hearing until the application is complete. So for non, well, for subdivision and non-subdivision matters before this board, what sometimes has happened in the past where a lot of people maybe have input into things that might be environmentally related to the project. I know sometimes Fred Wilcox, for example, would take comments from the public, I mean, it was pre-COVID. You know, he'd say, ladies and gentlemen, you know, this is not a public hearing. You will have a chance, we will be holding a public hearing later, and you'll have a chance to speak then about the project, but we're just considering the environmental review right now, and if you want to say something right now about that, anything dealing with the environmental review, you're welcome to do so, and it doesn't preclude you from coming back and making other comments, different comments later after we get through seeker, if it's neg deck. I mean, obviously, if it's pos deck, everything stops until they go off and do their environmental impact statement. So you, you could do that, where you feel that there might be people here who have things that they might feel are relevant to the seeker. Um, I mean, your determination for seeker is, is there a potential for a significant adverse environmental impact? In which case, an environmental impact statement is required. Sometimes people have comments about environmental aspects, but maybe it's something that you pretty much know this is not going to get a pos deck, just because, you know, it's a ten-foot sign, you know, or something, and even though somebody might be upset because they feel like it attracts from the quality of the neighborhood, it's just not so big that you need environmental impact statement for it. So you, you have discretion to, but, so that's something that you can think about or have the board discuss if they want that to happen.
You know, it's something that...
I was not wanting to question the decisions that were made or the process that were followed. I just, but I did want people to know that I was a bit uncomfortable about how we represent to the public that we were listening.
Yes. Caitlin Cameron, board member. Was this the first time the board had seen that item? Or had it become, so it, I'm still very new to the board. Is it ever a possibility that something comes for a workshop or a preliminary hearing? It would seem to me, based on my personal experience, we tend to do that for the more controversial items or items where the application may be incomplete. What, what are the parameters where we would have a preliminary hearing versus a final?
So, so by, by saying preliminary, we would consider that a sketch plan. Preliminary in our, in our process means the environmental review and preliminary approval. We don't have a standardized list of projects or a scope of projects that would be, that would warrant a sketch plan review by the planning board. It's usually a, a staff review and consideration of the scope of the project. With the stadium project, I believe the only thing that kicked that into planning board review was, were the lights, maybe. So they could have left off the light poles and just decided to change from regular turf or natural grass to artificial turf, and this board may not have ever seen that project. So we didn't see it as being so significant that it would have to go through a sketch review, then come back for a preliminary and/or final review.
Yes, that's, yes, Liz.
So two things. One, I think there's an inherent challenge in sort of anticipating what is going to be, what's going to draw attention. I was all ready to talk about the light poles. Nobody cared about the light poles. So I think that that, like, maybe that particular item was just a bit of an anomaly in a couple of different ways that created some awkwardness. Second point, I really want to hear from the public about their place and their concerns. I, I can't understand what it's like to live on a certain street in the town of Ithaca when I live on a different street, and I think that those perspectives, I almost always learn something new, and I think that I'm capable of separating out the, the important points from the feelings and whatever else might come up. So I, I feel like we're all we're all capable of, of not being completely biased by public comment, and like, why would we, why is it required? Why do we have it? Because we want those perspectives. So I would advocate for figuring out the most effective way to get those perspectives into the conversation in a meaningful way.
Any other, any other input?
Chris, I would say also that, see, there is a negative determination of environmental significance. The, if, if new materials come to light, if someone were to bring additional materials forward, just want to be very clear that, you know, you could change that prior determination. And do just want to mention, following up to Susan's comments, that environmental impact statement does actually have public scoping. It's required now. So scoping would be part of the process for something that you as lead agency found to be, you know, deleterious in that way, that it would have a positive declaration.
Hey, very good. Any, Phil, did that, did that help?
No, thank you for letting me have this chance to speak. Well, thank you.
Okay, yes, Liz.
Say today. I don't know what's going on. I have a separate business item. And that is, what do we, what is our plan for the Credit Farm intersection? Do we want to put that on the agenda at some point? What's, what are we doing? I'm asking the board.
Great, it's the board, Susan.
Yes, okay. At this point, I'm relying upon staff and legal to advise the, the board as to their options, and I don't think, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to come back immediately this evening, but you know, I, to be, be quite honest, you know, I, I think that from, from our perspective, we need to rely upon, you know, the staff and their timeline and their history, and what exactly transpired, and our legal counsel.
Did you speak on that? Yes, so the last time we saw you all was the, let's see, this is in late May, right? And, yes, May sixteenth, that's correct. So, yeah, I think I gave a recap of my conversation that I had with Jeff Smith, Highway Department Director, and Sean Black, the Chair for Wedge. And then a couple of days later, I got a message saying that the county had a follow-up conversation with Forest Home Improvement Association. That's accurate. And that they would be putting, I think I detailed the information about the traffic counters, that they had three counters at the corner of Pleasant Grove Road and Credit Farm Road, that they were going to be leaving them out until mid-June, so another and a half or so. And then they are seeing if the traffic patterns are consistent with the earlier study. For exactly what they mean by that, but in any event, that's it. So...
So basically, at this point, wait, you're awaiting the completion of the second traffic study, and then you have discussion with the county in regards to comparison of the results of that with the initial.
Yeah, and I think that's just an important thing to note, is that Pleasant Grove Road is a county-owned road. And so, you know, that being said, you know, the, the town understands that there's concerns. We have urged folks, especially Forest Home Improvement Association, to speak with county representatives about this particular concern. The highway.
Okay.
Thing I said last time, slightly more detail.
Thanks, DJ. So, Liz, is that assessed here at all?
I still have more questions.
Yeah.
So is there a point at which this would be on the agenda for us to discuss? Uh, what would the agenda item be?
Well, I guess my question is, is the, the planning board have any concern that they want to voice in a formal way about the like, the conditions not being met of the original approval? I could see a case for either way. Like, perhaps, we want to say as a group, we recognize that the conditions for the approval of the dorm construction project weren't met.
Would you, what, right, which conditions, and would you provide evidence?
Yeah, well, so this is, I, I feel hesitant to talk about it right now because there's so much material that I don't, I don't totally understand all the details, and you sent a lot of information that I have not gone through with a fine-tooth comb. So I, I don't want to have that discussion right now, but it just seems like my instinct is that we may wish to respond in some way, even if it's not an aggressive way, but there has been a long conversation about... has been a long conversation about this, and maybe there should be some resolution to it in the record at some point, and maybe we're not at that point, but, I don't know, maybe this is crazy, but that's where my mind goes, and if other people are fine with just sort of letting this unfold, then that's a decision we can make, but I.
So, I know the former Director of Planning, Susan Ritter, who retired, made a formal determination that the planning board conditions were all met. So, if you wanted, and I wasn't involved with that determination, so if you want to examine her determination and look at that, I mean, I'm not quite sure what it is you're asking for right now, but.
My understanding was that one of the conditions was the realignment of that intersection. Is that not the case?
So.
This is the discussion, we don't necessarily need to hear as much.
The wording's.
Okay.
Review the wording.
Maybe I've just misunderstood that.
And that was also all the email that CJ had sent to everyone. Significant amount of information in that email that my answer's.
Yeah, yeah, which is why I was not wanting to, like, go into great detail on this tonight. If other people are just not that worried about this, that's fine, I can go do my reading, and.
I would just say, you know, just stepping back and looking at the original, essentially, product scoping, so please recall, City of Ithaca Planning and Development Board, the lead agency in environmental review, so the lead agency and other agencies got the comment, right, and municipalities and such jurisdictions, let's just say. So, as part of that evaluation, they made a negative declaration of environmental significance, and regardless of what you might think of that at this very moment, the time to, you know, change that original impact evaluation or Part III statement was approximately, you know, April or May of 2019, so be that as it may. The mitigations proposed for this project relative to vehicular improvements were, quote, "Together with the town in Tompkins County, explore the possibility of Cornell realigning the intersection of Credit Farm Drive and Pleasant Grove Road," county-owned, parentheses there, "to direct traffic more readily to the Cornell campus. Cornell would fund and manage the project once approved by Cornell, the town of Ithaca, and the county." And, you know, we can tease apart the language of explore, you know, kind of follow that to its logical end, but, you know, I believe I sent the design report from La Bella Engineers, I believe, Cornell had retained as part of developing the construction drawings or the plan set that had been submitted to the town and county as part of the, quote, "exploration", as it were. So, that was the lead agency's, you know, seeker on the project, right? In the specific language in the resolution, there were two separate planning board resolutions, I don't have them in front of me right now.
Are they in the email that you sent?
Yes, absolutely.
I think I just really understood it, I didn't understand the explore part, I thought that this was a condition.
But that was just the seeker neg deck.
Okay.
That wasn't your resolution.
Okay.
So, there are specifics about an MOU.
That's right.
For the realignment in your resolution, so you need to look at the preliminary approval and the final.
And the final one.
Yeah, they're both there. Yeah, and then, and then if you feel that something is amiss in terms of whether conditions weren't met, then, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I would say also, you know, that's a question about enforcement as well, I just want to be really clear that, you know, specific powers are delegated to the planning board, use of division, special permits, and site plan, and it really doesn't extend beyond those parameters, other than to set conditions. And I have spoken to Greg about this, as well as other attorneys in town, Guy Crowe, about a presentation on conditions of land use review, I love to do this once a year, especially for planning boards, because it's really fascinating, to really dig into the details of, you know, what are conditions, you know, acceptable conditions in the land review process, particularly in New York City, always very interesting. So, we're hoping to have that sometime in July, which I think would be, you know, just interesting from a very broad sense, so.
Any other questions, Liz? Good. No, your questions are always welcome. I do have one item that I do need to bring before the board this evening. Regretfully, I am going to have to resign from the town planning board due to family needs, be relocating back to Tuaqua County, effective August 1. So, I'm not speechless, because I, to be honest with you, I think if my wife and I had our brothers, we'd be right there. But our needs are back there right now. So, I will, I will take whatever steps I can, you know, CJ, Chris, whatever I need to do, let me know.
That's right, wow. If there is any other member of the board that is willing or able, Chair, talk to staff, and we will make sure that.
Ariel, the grace for you two out there.
When is that? Is he going to be here?
He is going to the end of the year, but he travels quite a bit, so he will not be, he's not at this meeting, he won't be at the June, second June meeting, and he will not be at the July 18th meeting.
And I will be able to be at every meeting.
And you will be at those until August. Okay, so, yeah, the very first time that we're going to need another chair is the August 1st planning board.
If I could just speak personally, but I suspect for everybody, you're going to be missed, both as an individual on the board and as a chairman. We wish you well, but we wish you weren't going.
Thank you, Bill, that's very much appreciated.
Absolutely.
And the newer members, I haven't really gotten a chance to know you, but it really is a pleasure, and I love all the questions. That's what, that's what makes us a functioning board, is that we're not just up here just rubber stamping, we're actually asking questions that need to be asked, and sometimes pushing other board members when they need to be pushed. So, you know, for what it's worth, thank you, and I'll be here for the next few meetings, but it really is a pleasure, and I've had the opportunity to witness other municipalities. I worked for a municipality in the economic development and planning department, I worked for, you know, not-for-profit community organizations, and what's going on here with the town, I think is tens above a lot of places that I've seen, so my only, my only suggestion is keep it going, both from a board and a staff. Fantastic. And maybe, maybe someday I'll move back here. Okay, any other business?
We do have a meeting on June 20th. Is anyone, is there anyone here who is not going to be there? No, Bill, okay. Anybody else? Susan Brock might not be here.
I think it's not you, you know, that.
You did.
Yeah.
Ariel, you will be here on the 20th?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we have a quorum. So, we have, the Namga Monastery is coming back for site plan modification, they have a number of small things, but there's so many small things that they're doing that it warrants coming back to the board for site plan modification, and you will see a rare appearance of Mike Smith, one of our senior planners, because he reviews the Namga Monastery project. We also have 157 Enfield Falls Road, there's an open development area, and that will all be explained. It's a way to solve a, a not, a project that occurs on a property that does not have legal public access to a road that is on the town's official map. It's a very rare thing that comes to our planning board, this is the fifth one, I think, since I started working. And then, we are going to have a sketch plan review for the Karamore large-scale solar project, it's just a sketch plan and a declaration of lead agency. We expect that the planning board wants to be the lead agency in the environmental review, it's a Type 1 action, which requires notification to other involved and interested agencies, so if the board doesn't want to be the lead agency, let me know really soon. Otherwise, you're just going to be looking, you'll be looking at a sketch, sketch plan for that project. That one's on Mecklenburg Road, it's the same parcel that has the cell tower down. I think that's it for the June 20th.
Chris, you mentioned Karamore, that was the name he gave, a very large development that was posed, I don't know, 15 years ago now.
It has.
That's still sleeping, or is that gone?
That one, that's an interesting one. Every, every few years, John Rancic comes into Town Hall and tells us that he hasn't completely given up on this, it was a, I think, a maybe 300-unit medieval-style village on Mecklenburg Road, it was pos decked by the planning board, because it was going to be a massive project at the time, this was, I think, 2005.
No, it was after that.
Is it after that? Okay, it was, I don't know, after that. And, and so, yeah, the board made a positive declaration of environmental significance, there was a whole scoping process, and he submitted a traffic impact study, and that's it. So, right now, we're doing nothing with that project, it really doesn't exist, and one of these days, when John Rancic comes into Town Hall, I'm going to ask him if he wants to formally withdraw the project or not, because so much time has passed, that he probably won't even develop it, if he does develop it at all, it's not going to be at the same scale at all, because now there's going to be a solar project on his property, so.
It's on the same site.
It's on the same site, and I believe another property that's adjacent. Yeah. It's, it was an interesting project, but I, I don't want to say it's never going to happen, not likely to happen. And it would be a long process with lots and lots of submissions in order for it to happen. Rainick?
The, oh.
I have not heard from the applicants at all.
Hearing the property is.
Yes.
As I recall, there was a discussion of a revised zoning, but for the Rainick project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A draft in development zone.
And I was, yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I've been expecting that would be coming before us with comments at some stage.
Yes, we were expecting that as well, but that's, there's also nothing with that.
So, we have the same information as you have.
We, you do. Yep, there are no updates at all.
Any other, any other business? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Okay, that's a, Bill seconded, all in favor, I unanimous. We are adjourned at 8:25 PM.